Hi, everybody.
Hey Frank.
Frank.
Good morning, alright, good evening.
Hello, hello.
Hi Frank, how's everybody?
Doing okay, how are you feeling Lucy?
My arm is just, it's, it's, you know what, at night, it just really hurts really bad. I guess from just the whole day of, you know.
Yeah.
Just it just, it hurts bad, but thank you.
I just want to see if my microphone is working, you guys hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, thank you. Hello?
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Doing well, thanks, how about you?
Well, very good, thanks.
Good.
Good evening, Ms. Gutierrez, how are you? It's me Lucy Danny.
Hello Lucy, how are you? How are you feeling?
Uh, you know what, the nighttime is, it, um, I guess it's just from the whole day and a little bit more swollen and, and just, um, you know, just tight in the cast, so just, it's uncomfortable, really.
Well hopefully it'll be better.
Oh, it's your left hand, you know, so it's, you don't realize how much you still use your hand, your left hand even, to hold the jar, to open it, you know, um, just to, to pick up anything, you know, it's just, it's, it's unbelievable how much you use your left hand, you really don't even realize, so.
Well hopefully you're on the mend.
I am, I'm trying, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, we're still have, we have a quorum, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh yeah, we're good, we are good. Okay, I'd like to, uh, call the, uh, regularly, uh, regular board, uh, Board of Education meeting for the Clifton Board of Education, March the 4th, 2021. If you all would now please rise for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. Join with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alright, Mr. Lucy, roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Here.
Ms. Basford.
President.
Ms. Beltran.
Here.
Mr. Canova.
Here.
Mr. Daley. Ms. Danny.
Present.
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Abadrabo.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, um, if I just, uh, before we start, um, Commissioner Danny, um, had an accident and had to have a surgery on her arm, so she is healing at home and, uh, not very comfortable, um, to be on camera, so I just wanted to let the public know, uh, that she is here, she is present, you see her beautiful picture there, uh, but, uh, she will not have her live picture on. Uh, same thing for, uh, Vice President Abadrabo, he is, um, at a wedding, um, but he is going to try and do, uh, to come into the meeting at period of time, uh, to go out to his car or go into another room to, uh, to try and join us throughout the meeting, so again, you may not see his picture, uh, live tonight, so I just wanted the public to be aware of that. Uh, Mr. Casper, would you mind reading our mission statement?
Sure. The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate, lifelong learners, who are responsible and productive citizens contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights to the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape-recorded in accordance with policy 0168. Okay, adoption of the minutes of, uh, meeting, uh, February 18th, 2021, our regular meeting.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Casper, checked in by, who is it? Uh, Mr. Canova. Uh, discussion, changes. Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Basford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yeah.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley. I see him saying yes. Ms. Danny. Ms. Danny. She might have stepped away. Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Abadrabo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, Board Committee reports, uh, the public should know that the Board was extremely busy, uh, with our committees, uh, working very hard, so I thank all the Board members. Uh, so we have quite a few committee reports to read this evening. So, uh, Board members, if you would do your best to, um, give a synopsis of the reports instead of, uh, reading every single word, uh, it'll help us get through these a little bit quicker. So I'm just gonna start in the order that they're listed here, so, uh, Joe, if you would do technology, please.
Yep, and mine are only, uh, a few items here. Uh, Technology Committee met March 2nd, Board members present, uh, Jim Smith, Joe Canova, Dana Beltran, Farah Sawad, Administration President Danny Robert Tozzi, Janina Kucilevich, Mark Teigen, and Eric Mountain, meeting time is 5 to 6. Um, items of discussion, first one was Chromebooks. Mr. Mountain provided an update of Chromebook one-to-one access, while a small number of students are still in progress of signing out all devices, KD12 students now have access to Chromebooks. All power of secretaries and other support staff who are in need of Chromebooks are also receiving theirs this week. Now that we are fully one-to-one, preliminary discussions for replacement plans have begun. Chromebook sizes and touchscreens capabilities will be key issues in choosing models for future purchases. Other mobile technologies such as Windows laptops and Apple iPads are also discussed and will be elevated, evaluated for current and future use as appropriate. Number two, device insurance. Uh, Mr. Mountain provided a cost comparison between purchasing insurance for lost, stolen, or damaged Chromebooks versus paying for repairs as needed. At present, the repair and replacement costs paid by the district are significantly less than the cost of insurance, so it is recommended we maintain status quo and forego this option. The cost will be reevaluated on an annual basis. Students and families will continue to be responsible for damage caused by malicious or negligent behavior as per the agreement signed in the beginning of the year. Item three, training. Chromebook and Google Suite training will be offered to Board of Ed Commissioners in the near future to refresh and expand skills and comfort levels with the Google environment. Item four, staffing. Short-term and long-term staffing needs were discussed and will be considered as the 2122 budget is developed. Item five, Microsoft renewal. As student and staff continue to shift to the Google environment, different options for the district's Microsoft license renewer will discuss. Cost and usage will be analyzed in upcoming months in order to make the best decision for our annual review in July. If renewed, any renewal plan offers the Microsoft Office Suite of programs for staff and/or students to use on their personal devices, these opportunities will be advertised as appropriate.
Okay, are there any questions for, uh, Mr. Canova on technology? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Canova. Uh, next is policy, do, Ms. Basford?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. The Policy Committee met on February 23rd at 11:00 AM. Attendees were, uh, President Jim Smith, myself, Board Members Joe Canova, Dana Beltran from Administration, Dr. Robert Tozzi, Mark Teigen, Luis Ross, and also our Board Attorney was present. The Committee discussed by law 0155, it's up for second reading tonight. We did agree on the, um, why to put in is the Board President and/or majority of the Board of Education have the authority to discharge an ad hoc committee at any time, so that it was, it was put in and it's, it's staying like that. If everybody agrees tonight, it will be adopted on final resolution. Um, the Committee also discussed policies relating to public comment at a board meeting. Um, we are going to discuss this further, but basically if a board meets, if the board meeting is remote or partially remote, then the board must provide a remote option to the public. Discussion was then held on what, um, information a speaker, uh, needs to provide to, prior to the, um, speaking at a public meeting, name, address, name and school number, name and municipality. A speaker may remain anonymous, the Committee did not come to a recommendation and will, uh, review at an upcoming meeting. The Committee also reviewed and discussed policies relating to dress code for student staff and Commission's policy 5511, Dress Code, um, Student Dress Code was discussed and data was presented on violations and discipline. Uh, Policy 3216, Policy Dress Code was discussed and similar data presented. Policy 9322, Code of Conduct of Remote Meeting was discussed by, uh, dealing with Board Member, uh, Board Commissioners. The policy states that Board Members, we will dress and act and, and speak in a professional manner. As this policy was enacted for remote meetings, it was agreed to consult Strauss is made to inquire on non-remote meetings of dress policy for Board Members. The meeting adjourned at 12:17, uh, and Mr. Ross, uh, submitted the minutes. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basford. Next, um, we have, uh, we have Residency Security Committee, uh, the, uh, the public session, uh, minutes. Mr. Awad, would you like to read those, please?
Thank you, President Smith. Clifton Public Schools Residency and Security Meeting was held on March 2nd, 2021. Uh, on March 2nd, 2021, the Residency and Security Committee meeting began with a customary greetings and introductions. Present at the meeting were the Board of Education Commissioners, President Smith, Committee Chair, which was I, Farah Sawad, Commissioner Canova, Commissioner Casper, Dr. Robert Tozzi, uh, Superintendent, also, uh, Mark Teigen, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Mark Gengero, Commissioner of Private and Security, Ahmad Hamda, uh, Clifton High School Vice Principal, uh, Secretary, Security Secretary Brenda, uh, also Security Secretary Nancy Foster, Vincent. Uh, I apologize if I pronounce this name wrong, Tom McKelley. Also, uh, Mr. Gengero recognized individual hard work and efforts, uh, put forward by the, uh, Registration Department and Security Team to the Committee. Mr. Gengero provided the Committee with a brief overview of security in the district, including compliance with NJ School Drill Law, types of emergency procedures, and the district's response to varying types of emergency situations. Second, Mr. Gengero provided the Committee with a brief overview of the district's registration and residency procedures and processes, including students who reside in the state of New Jersey are entitled to free public education between the ages of five and 20 years old, and other students who are eligible for preschool under the age of five or special education students over the age of 20 are entitled to free public education. Residents, more accurately called, is defined at the fixed permanent address to which students return to at the end of the day. In accordance with NJSA 18A 38-1A, students who are not in Clifton are not eligible to attend the Clifton Public School District. Information about how the enrollment registration process, how to determine eligibility based on age residency and the criteria of attendance and enrollment. Dr. Robert Tozzi further explained the process to deem students ineligible involves affording parents and guardians students the opportunity to present their cases to specific residency at a hearing of the Board of Education. As such, a portion of the Residency and Security Committee meeting was allocated for this process. A total of 13 families were issued notice for eligibility and were invited to attend, uh, the hearing at the Board of Education. Five of those families were presented at the hearing. Dr. Robert Tozzi facilitated the hearing in both in Arabic and Spanish-speaking translators were made available for the families. At the conclusion of each hearing, the Residency and Security Committee members discussed each individual's case and came to, as a recommendation that will be made in executive session on March 4th at the Board of Ed meeting. All decisions will be communicated via email and certified mail. The Committee also discussed following items that will be added to the agenda for the next Residency and Security Committee. Detailed overview of the district's, uh, security procedures, determining ways to pro, uh, to better promote both the bounty and anonymous tip line, the possibility of registrations for specific grades. Committee Chair Farah Sawad and, uh, Mark Gengero worked collaborating to determine that, the date of the next Residency and Security Committee. The Committee requested to have multiple reports submitted for the report at the Board of Education meeting, including the results of investigations specific of the number of confirmed residents and non-residents, the number of bounties awarded to citizens for providing the information that leads to discovering that families does not live, reside in Clifton, and the number of investigations that were conducted. That is all.
Are there any, uh, questions for Mr. Awad? Uh, just for clarification, Mr. Awad, uh, it's Vincent Constantino is our domicile investigator.
Mr. Vinnie, thank you.
That's right. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Education, Mr. Casper?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two. Our first meeting from December 8th, 2020, uh, the Education Committee was held in conjunction with the Technology Committee. The meeting began at 5:00 PM. Attendees were myself, uh, as a chairperson, Board Vice President Judith Basford, as well as Board Members, Mr. Joe Canova and Mr. Fahim Abadrabo. Administrators included Dr. Danny Robert Tozzi, Mrs. Janina Kucilevich, Ms. Heather Rotolo, Ms. Derek Mountain, and our guest was Rachel Harrington. Okay, so all of these I'm going to read were informational, um, were informational, um, provided to the Committee, which I will read now. So our first, uh, item was the Linkit Online Assessment Platform. Uh, Mrs. Kucilevich gave a brief overview of the Linkit Online Assessment Platform. It is a powerful multifunctional student database that will allow school districts to measure student growth down to the individual standard and allows for cross-referencing of teaching, of teacher-made, local standardized and state assessments. Our Special Ed update was given by Mrs. Heather Rotolo. Um, she described many of the special education initiatives taking place. Ms. Chavez ran nurtured heart training, where 120 families were registered and over 60 participated. Parents were engaged in strategies to successfully diffuse difficult behaviors and reinforce positive behaviors. PAC had a meeting scheduled on 12:15:20. Flyers were sent via Peach Jar in multiple languages. The meeting was planned to have breakout rooms with Arabic and trans, uh, Spanish translators. Commissioner Abadrabo made a connection for Arabic-speaking families to have a specific parental support meeting in Arabic via a community organization. Vice President Basford brainstormed multiple ways for advertising these parent forums throughout local community organizations. A successful meeting between district administration and prees were also discussed. Uh, Ms. Rotolo shared that the Special Ed Department created their own Instagram page um, to distribute information to families. Special education supervisors plan activity nights for January and will be scheduled several open meeting, open meetings for parent questions. And then there was a quick device update from Mr. Mountain, who provided an update about Chromebook distribution to date. Devices delivered in grades three to five were completed. Students in grades K through two needed devices, who needed devices received them. The final order of devices for the K2 will be distributed upon receipt. Then we had another, um, education meeting on February 11th. The Committee was held in this one, um, the Education Committee is now, um, separated from the Technology Committee. We met at 4:00 PM. Attendees were myself, uh, Board President Jim Smith, and Board Members Farah Sawad and Lucy Danny. Administrators included Dr. Robert Tozzi, Mrs. Kucilevich, Mrs. Rotolo, Mr. Mountain, and Mrs., and Ms. Banning. Our guest, um, was Ms. Rachel Harrington. Number one, we received, uh, Ms. Banning gave a brief overview of our district ESL bilingual program. She discussed how clustering classes at magnet schools allowed students to receive additional hours of ESL and bilingual instruction. The district has magnet programs in four magnet schools, uh, in, in Spanish, Arabic, and ESL, only in programs at CCMS and CHS. She shared that Clifton's bilingual and ESL program has been a NJDOT model program for over a decade. After-school tutoring and summer programs are also available. Ms. Rotolo once again provided an update of many special ed initiatives taking place. Family involvement activities had been advertised via Peach Jar, Integral, and the district website. A program for behavior strategies was held on 1/21/21. A program for picky eaters is planned for 2/25/21. A parent support group planned for 2/22/21, and an assistive technology training program scheduled for 3/3/21. Family fun activities, including a snowman contest in January and a favorite book scene project in March, have been planned in collaboration with the NJEA and the CEA Pride Grant Program. Learning loss support in an extended school year. Mrs. Kucilevich gave an overview of the district plans to address learning loss. Local assessments have shown that most typical student reading levels have remained close to expected ranges and major math content is being addressed. The areas of writing and advanced programs, including AP, need additional support. Online after-school tutoring has begun, including for AP classes. The district has applied for a grant to provide a summer learning loss program in addition to existing Title I, Title III Extended School Year, IC, and middle school and high school summer programs. A summer intervention program is also being included in the local budget if the district does not receive the aforementioned grant. Curriculum and pacing are being modified for September to provide additional student support. All of these, um, there was no action taken on these. Uh, they were also informational for, uh, the Board Members and the public, and both of them are respectfully submitted by Mrs. Janina Kucilevich.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Casper?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Canova.
I had two questions. One was, uh, about Peach Jar. I remember the last time we spoke about that, they said then there may be a calendar functionality. I know we were talking about creating some sort of community calendar where, uh, all these events from things that are going on Peach Jar are basically events or things going on in the district. And we were talking about possibly tying that into a calendar and putting it on the website. Do you know if, if that functionality was discussed or, or if it's possible?
I don't have any other info on that. Mrs. Kucilevich, would you know? About Peach Jar?
I can, I can look into that. I remember it was discussed, um, and I will address it with our, um, PR and website, um, coordinators.
Okay, thanks. And the other question I had was around learning loss. How exactly are we determining that? Are we looking at things from last year compared to this year, or, and where students would have been this year, or did we give some sort of assessment?
Mr. Casper, I think Mrs. Kucilevich would give the, give the best answer on that. Great, it's an excellent question.
Assessing learning losses is a challenge, but some of what, um, people are calling learning loss is a little bit difficult to measure. What we are doing is comparing trends of, of the data that we do have in Linkit of what students' typical, uh, reading levels would be, attaining of certain standards would be. And we are doing comparisons with this year's assessments. At the same time, this year's assessments have been modified, we have a very modified pacing and adjusted curriculum for this school year because of the situation and our scheduling. Uh, remote instruction is different from in-person instruction. So there have been changes. We can't do an apples-to-apples comparison, but we can do a standard-by-standard, um, as well as a comparison of reading levels and major math content, which has been our primary focus, as well as major, uh, science content. Um, right now, we are waiting up to see what the DOE wants to do. They have actually asked districts, including ours, to submit our local data as they make their determination on what will happen with this year's standardized testing NJSLA, which was, um,
And one other question, are we also comparing ourselves, not only internally from last year to this year, but, uh, are we comparing ourselves to other schools to see how we fared and, and, you know, if there's any areas of, of improvement that we could have?
At this time, there is no way to compare us to other schools. The entire state, um, suspended assessments last year, actually the entire nation. Um, and typically, when we compare ourselves to others, it's based on that New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. It did not take place last year, um, and it will, we don't know what's happening this year. Right now, it is slated to take place at the end of the school year, but, uh, that test would then be compared to the previous school year, since there is a year of missing data. What we can do is look internally at our own student growth, and I think the vast majority of school districts, um, given this pandemic situation, have been very focused on keeping our own students engaged and measuring our own students' growth, rather...
Yeah, agreed, and, and same like our Board of Ed meetings here. I mean, the pandemic did throw us in a thin environment where we're remote, but I think our sub-commissions have been even more effective because the amount of times that we're able to be engaged with each other, you know, grows. So I'd be curious to see how that works for distance education in the future of Clifton here and see, you know, what have we learned from going remote and what sort of nuggets can we take back and possibly integrate into our curriculum?
If I may, there have been many very big positives. The fact that we are now 100% one-to-one. The fact that all of our teachers and students have really risen to the occasion with using all of these electronic programs that sometimes in the past were used minimally or not enough are now being used to the, really to the extent that many of them were designed to be used. Um, and we've seen quite a bit of actual, of student growth internally. Um, in the minutes, it did indicate that our student reading levels are still remaining on par with what was it, what would have been expected in a normal typical year. The same with major math content. Now, are there gaps? Are there groups of students who, who, who do need different approaches and more in-person instruction? Absolutely. But there have been definite kernels, including this format of Zoom meetings and Google meets. We have had more parent participation than ever before. It's so much easier to schedule a parent conference. They don't have to leave the home. Um, so this type of of communication, I think, is something we need to leverage moving forward. Um, it's definitely a plus.
And just one more question. You mentioned uh that the reading levels were retained. Are you referring to? Raz Kids and Myon? Is that where that data is being derived from? Or is that just an assessment overall of teachers and their assessment of students?
Raz Kids and Myon are the instructional programs which then feed into the reading leveling done in the STAR that we measure in STAR. And we will level students using Raz Kids, but that data then goes um is measured and compared and collected via Linkit. Um, using our literacy assessment folder. Um, so that's where the so it is standardized and individualized, and that is where the data is coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's see.
President, if I may ask a question, this kind of going towards what Mr. Canova was saying, but. More of the in the post part of remote learning. If we're going to compare and contrast data, not just today. From from when we went to remote till now, but um to Mr. Kusalevich through the through superintendent, if I may. Um, are we going to compare and contrast data in terms of in class versus remote? And what has benefited our district the most? Because a lot of kids, I would assume. Or many students, what I would assume. Remote learning really wasn't from them and you know, it's like college level. Some prefer the online, some prefer the in class. Um, so I'm interested to see what what that would look like if we're going to do any data, um, any research and data collection on that.
Um, we do and can see what are students, which students are remote and which will um which students will return in person. At the same time, the curriculum has been designed. So that students who are at home and students who are in person are following the same pacing, the same instruction, the same materials, the same activity.
Thank you. I appreciate you. And I also want to say thank you to your staff and to superintendent administration for. You know, obviously we went into a pandemic where this is a first for everybody, right? Uh, for a full school, for mostly a full school year. So thank you for everything you've done. Um, you know, it's not great for anybody. Best we can do. And then also, Mr. President, if I may, to the chair of education for your first set of notes, I know I was on education last year. Uh, and not this year. Uh, I will speak with you and our and the president, President Smith about. Um, handing off my connections and networks of folks that, you know, for the Arab speaking part as well, so you can work along with Mrs. Kusalevich and administration.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next uh is finance. Mr. Daley.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mrs. Smith. Board members present was in addition to myself, Dana Beltran, Joe Canova and Jim Smith. Administration was Dr. Robert Tozzi, Michael Yuse and Eric Tomasevic. Uh, the annual audit for two thousand nineteen twenty, Mr. Uc, Mr. Uc and Mr. Lurch. Uh, district order presented the annual school audit for the two thousand nineteen twenty school year ending in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. The comprehensive annual uh financial report and auditor's management report were reviewed. Both documents will be emailed and mailed to all board members. Mr. Lurch will present. Uh, during the February eighteenth, two thousand twenty one board meeting. Two, IMAC health insurance broker. Two thousand one for two thousand twenty two health premiums. Mr. Marillo uh. And his team briefed the committee on the current claims of potential budget. For the next year, the committee will be uh will have the broker continue to negotiate with the district's. Medical providers to to ensure the best possible premium rate possible. The chapter forty four. And and for those of the public who don't know what chapter forty four is, this is confusing. Uh, we've been operating under chapter seventy eight law for uh paying health insurance. And for the most part, that's changed to chapter forty four. It's uh it's reduced the amount of premiums most um employees have to pay. But I'll read on here. Chapter forty four impact. Mr. You see, Mr. Marillo presented the financial impact of the NJEHP's. New Jersey Education Health Plan, chapter forty four, medical contributions, which are based on salary. The NJEHP was mandated to be and affect. Uh, men to be in in effect as of January first, two thousand and one. Chapter seventy eight contributions are based on a percentage of the premium. Therefore, the contributions made to the district are much lower for those who opt to into the NJEHA. The impact from January two thousand and one through June two thousand and twenty one. Will be uh the current budget. The administration will budget accordingly in the two thousand one twenty two budget. For those who may have switched to be switch maybe switching to the NJEHP as of July first, two thousand and twenty one. After after the opening enrollment, which will take place in May two thousand and twenty one. Anybody have any questions on the minutes from February ninth?
All right, Mr. Daley, you have some more.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'm trying to scroll.
You know, it's not opening for me either.
Okay, here we go. Okay, uh, Clifton Board of Education Finance Committee, February twenty third, two thousand twenty one. Five P M to five thirty minutes where members present, including myself, was Mr. Canova, Ms. Beltran and Mr. Smith. Uh, administrative president was uh Dr. Robert Tozzi. Michael Yuse and Eric Tomasevic. Also in attendance was Rachel Harrington. Uh, Aetna updated proposal for twenty one twenty two school year. Mr. Yuse informed the committee that a district's health provider, Aetna, has provided. An updated proposal for the health insurance premium cost for the two thousand one, two thousand twenty two school year. The new proposal includes a two point oh five percent reduction in health insurance premium costs. From the two thousand one, two thousand and twenty one school year. Administration will monitor premium rates until the twenty one twenty two school year budget is due. Uh, number two. Two thousand one, two thousand twenty one, twenty two. State aid update. Mr. UC communicated to the committee that the two thousand twenty one, twenty two state. Aid information has not been released by the state. The district should expect to receive the state information by this Friday. S R two funds, AKA CARES two funds. Uh, Mr. UC was uh has informed the committee that the district was awarded an additional funds by the state. Relating to the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, S R two. Under the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations. CARES Act, the total amount of the additional funds is ten million nine hundred sixty three dollars and six hundred and thirty nine dollars. Um, the budget application will be available beginning March fifteenth and is due. Uh, by May fourteenth, amendments can be made after the due date of May fourteenth. The allowable users of these funds are the same as the original S R funds. Plus additional allowable uses addressing learning loss, preparing uh preparing schools for reopening. Testing, repairing and upgrading projects to improve air quality in the school buildings. Uh, that concludes my notes for the um. February twenty third meeting. Anybody have any questions? Okay, uh, finance minutes for February twenty sixth. Uh, Clifton Board of Education Finance Committee, February twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty one. Three thirty P M to five fifty P M minutes. Uh, president board members was myself, Joe Canova, Dana Belgium and Jim Smith. Uh, administration was Dr. Robert Tozzi, uh, Mr. Yuse and Mr. Tomasevic. Number one, twenty one, twenty two state aid update. Mr. UC communicated that the committee. Uh, to the committee that the two thousand twenty one, twenty two state aid and information has been released by the state. The district is expected to receive fifty five million, three hundred eighty thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars in the general. Uh, in the general fund state aid for the twenty for twenty one, twenty two school year. This in an increase of twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars and forty two uh and four hundred and twenty one dollars, excuse me, the. The grammar uh for the twenty one uh for the twenty twenty one revised general fund state aid. Charter school aid. Mr. UC informed the committee. That the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two charter school aid is nine million, five hundred sixty nine thousand, two hundred and thirty six dollars. This is an increase of one million, eight hundred. Uh, eight hundred and eighty six thousand dollars and five hundred and a hundred and five dollars. From the two thousand and one, two thousand and two original charters, school aid. Uh, that concludes the notes for the. February twenty sixth finance meeting. Anybody has any questions? I'll be happy to answer it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Daley. Uh. Last, we have a facilities committee, Ms. Beltran.
Okay, the facilities committee met on February twenty third from four to five P M. Myself, James Daley, Frank Casper and Jim Smith were in attendance. Administration. In attendance was Danny Robert Tozzi, Mike Usee, Eric. Uh. Thomas David and Al Marcion also attended with Rachel Harrington. The first thing we spoke about was the inventory status of our PPE equipment. Mr. Marchionne said the district currently has plenty of stock on PPE equipment, such as mask and sanitizing solution. The second thing we talked about was the air scrubbers. The SR two funds will be paying for this. Administration discussed the emergent need to place an air scrubber in every classroom and office space for the reopening of school. Administration is looking to purchase one thousand air scrubbers utilizing the additional funding the district was awarded from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. SR two. Through the coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations act, CRSSA. Uh, Mr. Marchionne informed the committee that air scrubbers are available and will be arrive in time for the opening of March eighth, pending any unforeseen delivery delays. The third thing we talked about was the CHH kitchen renovation update from the cafeteria fund. Mr. Usee provided an update relating to the CHS kitchen renovation project with the committee. The final drawings are in the works with the architects. The goal is to have the renovation completed for the start of the twenty one, twenty two school year. The initial phase of the project is to start the abatement of the kitchen and hood exhaust. The abatement will not affect the school relating to in person instruction and staffing present in the school during the process. The mail distribution location will be moved to CHS from CHS to uh Woodrow Wilson for three to four weeks during the abatement process. The start date for this uh change has yet to be determined, and once the start date is confirmed, the change will be made as soon as possible. On the district's website and all district's social media platforms. CCMS partial roof damage. Mr. Marchionne informed the committee of wind damage to the upper gym roof at CCMS. There are no signs of water leaks. The roof damage was submitted to the district's insurance provider. The insurance provider informed the district that the replacement cost to repair the section of the damaged roof is not covered under the insurance due to a sixty seven year old age of the roof. Mr. Marchionne received a quote through Bergen County Co-op to cover the six thousand square feet of roof that needs to be replaced. Estimated cost is about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars with a thirty year warranty. Administration will check if the section of the roof will be will get impacted by the pending bond referendum before proceeding. CCMS media center renovation. Mr. Marchionne provided an update on the project to the committee, which was budgeted for utilizing maintenance reserve fund. The project is underway and is going as planned. The floors have been gutted and leveled by the contractor. The contractor will be installing ceiling lighting, new flooring, painting, new shelves to installing two new bathrooms and new furniture. School number seventeen, BMS, uh, which is a um. The management system for the air conditioning. Mr. Marchionne informed the committee that the school number seventeen, BMS staff training, including the principal, head custodian and maintenance has occurred. The new system has been working very well. Cila B, BMS update, potential project. Administration will be looking into possibly upgrading the BMS affiliate fee. Mr. Marchionne will obtain a quote for the cost of the committee to consider, and that was the end of the minute.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Bass.
Um, did the uh air scrubbers make it in in time for Monday, the eighth?
Ms. Bassford, they're not in yet. They are on a truck on their way. Um. If if they come in this weekend, we'll bring in our staff uh over the weekend to make sure they're in the classrooms. Looking at worst case scenario, they might get here on Monday.
Thank you.
So President, I have two questions.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Canova.
Um, the first one uh was also about the air scrubbers. I was looking at the data you sent over, and it looks like those are HEPA filters. Does that then mean that? We don't need to keep the windows open because we're going to circulate the air through that HEPA filter, or is it? That's in addition to keeping the windows open in the classrooms?
That's going to be in addition to keeping the windows open, Mr. Canova, but we do have some. Offices and smaller rooms in the district that don't have windows. So uh now while we don't have students in those rooms, we have, you know, maybe two staff members sharing that, so they'll have. Uh, the air scrubbers in there, which will take care of the ventilation, but in the classrooms, it will be the windows and the scrubbers.
Okay. And the other question I had was about the roof, but I think I recall reading in there that we're replacing six thousand square feet. Is that just a small portion of the roof or is that the entire roof?
I'm gonna ask if my Mike, Mike, do you have more details on that about the size of that project? How how big a part of the roof that is?
I'm I'm really sorry. I got kicked out. I guess it's just really windy outside. Can someone repeat the question?
No, uh, so I saw on the agenda or the meeting minutes rather. For Christopher Columbus, it said that we're placing a, I don't know if it was a portion of the roof or. A smaller roof on Christopher Columbus. I didn't really understand which one it was. It was six thousand square foot area for a hundred and twenty five thousand.
It it the the specific part of the roof is um the roof above the upper gym of CCMS.
So it's only that one area?
Correct.
Because it was relatively, they mentioned it was relatively old. Should we just look into replacing the whole thing or is that not something we want to do?
At this point in time, there's no problems with the roof except that section.
Yeah, Mr. Canova, actually, one of the things that came up in committee was um. Waiting to to find out about the referendum because when we the referendum passes, we may need to be putting rooftop units up there. So we wanted to make sure that the roof is sound in in all places and we might. So we we might be waiting on a decision to do the whole thing until after April twentieth.
Yeah, because I wouldn't want to do one little part and then we have to find out we have to do the whole thing anyway, and maybe I even have to rip up that and essentially waste money.
And I think it was, I think it was sixty seven years old, the roof was.
Yeah.
But it's not covered anymore, essentially.
But that's what I mean. So I don't I don't know. Uh, should we look at doing the whole? I I wouldn't want to do patchwork. For a certain amount of money to then find out we're essentially throwing that out the window to redo it again. That's all.
If we were to do it, it it would be a complete roof for that section. But I understand what you're saying. If you wanted to quote the tire.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was like a pitched portion of, it was just over the gymnasium. I'm not familiar with the structure. I I didn't know if that was. Its own six thousand square foot area or not.
It it is, to my knowledge, and it's flat.
Oh, okay. So then that's fine. Thank you.
No problem. You're welcome.
Any other questions for uh facilities? Okay, seeing none, our next committee report is our student representative. Uh, always glad to have you here, Max. So the floor is yours.
Always glad to be here, Mr. Smith. All right, so um uh just a few updates for this week. A lot of them are just um continued updates from last time I spoke. Uh, first, I just want to speak about the mental health survey. So it was sent out last week, the mental health survey that I've been bringing up for a few weeks now. It was sent out last week and there were um. There were announcements on the morning news advertising the survey. Um, and as of three days ago, so as of Monday, which was three days ago. Only a hundred and eighty four students filled out the survey, which is, I mean, can. filled out the survey, which is, I mean, compared to the amount of students that are in our whole school, that's a very slim amount of students that actually filled out the survey. So because not a lot of students filled it out, it was emailed to, again, to all of the CHS students yesterday. So I'm just asking everyone, any students who are watching this or any parents of high school students, either remind your kids or if I'm speaking to high school students, you fill out the survey. It's really important. The survey is meant to give the staff and administration a sense of what they can do in regards to mental health. There's only a few questions on the survey, and there's also a doc that has a lot of important links and emails and cell numbers to call if you're in need of assistance from one of the members of the staff at CHS. So it's really important you fill that survey out so the staff can get a better scope on what they can do in regards to mental health. So yeah, high school students, if you're watching this, definitely fill it out, check your email and fill it out. And high school parents watching this, tell your kids to fill it out. It's really important. Next, I just want to quickly talk about the referendum citizens committee. So there was a big meeting yesterday, as all of you know, as all of you were there. For members of the public who weren't at the meeting yesterday or didn't ask any questions or weren't watching it, you can still watch the meeting. It's on the Clifton Public Schools TV YouTube channel or CPS TV. It was a community forum and it was about two and a half hours long, maybe close to three hours, but you don't have to watch the whole thing. There's different 15 to 20-minute time slots you can skip to if you only want to hear a certain part about the referendum. I was lucky enough to be able to speak at the meeting last night, and I think I was part of a panel with another student and three teachers, and we all shared our experiences on experiences we had in the Clifton School District. And I think it was a really insightful meeting, and if you're on the fence about whether you should vote yes or not come April 20th, or you just don't know about the referendum and want to know more, definitely watch this meeting. It's, should be one of the last things posted on the CPS TV YouTube channel. Also, in case you don't know how to get to the referendum website, the link is at the top of the Clifton Schools homepage. So if you go to the Clifton Schools website and you go to the homepage, there's a link in red bold at the top of the page that says Clifton Votes April 20th. You click on it, and then that's the website for the referendum. It has all the information you'd need to know. Upcoming SAT testing, I always mention this, I just wanted to quickly mention it's May 8th, 2021, and June 5th, 2021. You should register as soon as possible. Spaces may or may not be available at CHS. I'm pretty sure that the March 13th date is no longer available. It's definitely not available at CHS anymore, and I think it might not be available, period. But chances are, if you wanted to sign up for the March date, you would have done so already since it's so close. So definitely look out for May 8th and June 5th, our future SAT testing dates. One thing I wanted to mention, because that last meeting, I was a little bit confused. Sorry, I was a little bit confused when one person mentioned how there wasn't going to be a call-in portion. So I just wanted to clarify, for the next Board of Ed meeting, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is March 18th, where you, where you said it's going to be in person, but you could still be hybrid if you want, you could still be at home. So will participants in the public portion still be able to join through Zoom? And will participants be able to speak through the phone? Are those still options or do we actually have to go to the school to speak in person? So please just answer that when you can. And also, I just wanted to ask Ms. Bassford, because you mentioned this at the last meeting, there was an Eye on Mental Health, I think was the name of the document. It was New Jersey School Boards, and it sounded really interesting. So please send that to me when you can. If you type in my, my name on the school email and cliftonschools.net, my ID should pop up and you should be able to send it to me. But yeah, if, I definitely want you to send me that. And Dr. Robert Tozzi, if Ms. Bassford isn't able, is, has trouble reaching out, I'll give, you can give her my email. Okay. Couple other things I wanted to mention. Oh, I always do a plug-in for the CHS Morning Show, continuing to provide great updates. And also, Mr. Stepneski is arranging, as you know, there's always an All-City Concert every year. Last year, we weren't able to do it because that's right when the coronavirus happened. We were actually planning on having a really awesome project for All-City, but we weren't able to do it. But this year, we're doing a virtual All-City project with the elementary schoolers, the middle schoolers, and the high schoolers. So I'm not exactly sure when that's coming out, but I know there are recordings we're due tomorrow, so it must be soon. So I would just look out for that when you get the chance, and that's it. Good night, everyone, and I hope you have a great week.
Max, if you could just wait here, there might be some board members that have some questions. I know Ms. Bassford has her hand up, yes.
Yes, Max, through you, Mr. President Smith, Superintendent, we did, I did send it to Dr. Robert Tozzi. He did send it out. I think you sent it to the B O E email. I don't think Max is on it. So I'll resend it to you, and then if you, you know, Max, we did, we did try at the last meeting. Yeah, it's a really great report. You can always go on New Jersey School Boards Association's website. They have multiple reports on there for different things. You may want to peruse that site and look around and get familiar with it, but I'll make sure you get it tonight. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's, it's okay. Thank you so much.
Dr. Robert Tozzi, you wanted to say something?
Thanks, Mr. Smith. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Max for his contributions last night to our community forum. I think it's great for our community members to hear from our students who really are most affected by this upcoming referendum. And he, he said something, and I'm going to paraphrase it, but he said something that I thought was very powerful. And he said, "Look, I'm not going to be here to see any of these changes. I'm graduating this year." But he said, "I wouldn't be sitting here wasting my time if I didn't have such a great experience in the Clifton Public School District." And the, and the, and the Clifton Public School District deserves this. And I just thought that was such a mature, powerful thing for a young man to say. So Max, thank you again. And our other student, Maryam Jabril, was just incredible also. So Max, thanks again. And then, and then finally, I saw a video, it might have been last week, of the CHS Morning Show where you were doing an SNL skit of Chris Farley and the Man Down By The River.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe next time you come on for a public comment, you can, you can do your impression for us.
I think I'm going to save that for like one of my last addresses.
Thanks, Max.
All right. Well, and would you, would it be okay if you answered the question about the, the public portion, what it's going to be like next week or in two weeks if we're allowed to do a call-in or Zoom?
Yeah, the, Max, the board is actually going to be discussing that in executive session, so we'll come out and make an announcement on that.
Okay, thank you.
Just so everyone may not have seen it, if you go to the Clifton High School Morning Show today, you'll be in for a real treat from one of Max's friends, who will teach you some, some, Max, I'm sorry, I'm not putting you on the spot, but you, you have such a great friend there, and he, he teaches everyone some great dance moves. So if you, if you have an opportunity, everyone, please go and check that out. You will thoroughly enjoy it, as I did. Thank you, Max, and thank your friend for all that he does for the morning show. I truly enjoy it, and I'm sure many others do. Thanks again, Max.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Have a good week, everyone.
You too. Okay, we're now going to go into public recognition. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of Clifton for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the City of Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested to state their name and municipality that they live in, and the subject matter they're, they're addressing. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issued, raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered. A response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking, specifically comments regarding students. And my computer went down. Sorry. My Chromebook likes to act up here. Specifically, comments regarding students, employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Okay, I believe we have floor, the someone labeled Floor Moore. If you would please state your name, municipality, and subject matter, please. Caller with the name Floor Moore. Okay, Floor Moore, last call. Okay, we'll move on to the next. I believe, Mr. Mark Brunsack, you were next.
How you doing? Do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi. Thank you, President Smith, Vice President Bassford, all the school board, and all the members of the Board of Ed. I just wanted to let everybody know that the U.S. Census Bureau, based on a population of 8.8 million in the state of New Jersey, and the CDC has just reported as of today that 2.3 million doses of the COVID vaccine have been administered as of today. And out of those 8.8 million residents of the state of New Jersey, 20% of those are under 18 years old. So if you want to count the 18-year-olds, that means 26, over 26% have already had the first vaccine, over 26% of residents, of residents of the state of New Jersey have already had them. And I'd like to know, since the government, since Governor Murphy has already stated that as of March 15th, that teachers, that educators, kindergarten through, through 12th grade are eligible, is there any visibility on, on how we could try to get them the vaccine as humanly possible? Moreover, that how many of the educators in the district have been vaccinated already? As of February 8th, as of February 8th, 2021, the number of school districts in the state of New Jersey of full in-person instruction was at 95 districts out of, out of more than 600. Today is March 4th, and we're supposed to start this coming Monday. And again, like I said last time I called in, it's the best news we've had since November. And I'm asking the board to do everything they can. We heard Ms. Beltran before stating that she's going to get a bunch of air purifiers for each one of the classrooms, over 1,000 that should be in place. And this is one of, you know, the circulation issues and, and, and on top of it, all the other precautions are there. Kids are going to be able to have safe schooling. And people could have argued over a month ago, too, that they could have had it, too. So I'm asking this board, but please do everything you can to have the kids, to have the parents who have, want their kids to have in-person schooling, to keep them there as best as you can, and to continue that. Thank you for your time. Thank you, and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Brunsack. I believe next is student in our Clifton Schools, Chloe Papowicz, you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Chloe Papowicz. I think it is great that schools are reopening. The new cases reported by the Clifton Board of Health on Tuesday was only 84, which gives our town a daily infection rate of 0.3%. I like that we are starting to hold activities outdoors. This will help students' mental health, along with allowing our community to heal. Sports were always held our spot, as held, and now the music programs are having outdoor spring concerts, and the spring musical will also be outdoors. I would like to see the holding of outdoor events extend to the many academic awards programs and senior activities, which normally occur during the spring. There was no hope of having any indoor events for our school or our size, but why can't we hold an academic award ceremony outside, even if it's in shift? We could use the stadium, no general, just the roads. Same with the prom and senior awards night. I know I would be willing to help, and so would many parents. We could use tents for class day and still have a nicer feel. The prom could be at the stadium, and we can ask everyone to not wear skirts because of the turf. I know the students would enjoy these activities even without the food, which is always a COVID issue. I am suggesting that we start planning outdoor activities, and myself and many others would be willing to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Lori Lalama.
All right, good evening to everyone. I hope everybody is doing well. I have a buffet of information tonight. So the first thing I want to say is that I received a phone call from the governor, and I'm going to play it.
Lori, it's Governor Phil Murphy. God bless you and thank you for everything you do in Clifton and for so many, as an educator in technology, as a union leader, particularly in these incredibly stressful times. I cannot thank you enough. You have a lot of fans out there, and count me as one of them. God bless you. Stay well, stay strong, and keep up the great work. Take care.
All right, so I was very happy hearing that from the governor. And I was teaching at the time, so I couldn't pick up my phone because I'm responsible to my class. Plus, it said unknown, so I usually don't pick up unknown anyway. But that was a really great thing because it brings more of a positive light to our district, and that's what I think is very important. All right, number two, the vaccines. Teachers are happy, vaccines are out. I've gotten my first one because I fall under the fluffy category, so that worked out fine for me. All right, so everybody is excited about that because at the end, we all want to be in our classrooms. We all want to have kids. And I've been doing this for a long time, but you know, the idea is to make sure our kids are safe, our kids' families are safe, because we can't compare apples and oranges. That just doesn't work. So, and to maintain the staff and their families safe. So that's what's important there. All right, so I want to thank the principals and School Six for supplying all the hand sanitizers, measuring the, the classrooms to make sure we are following the guidelines by the Department of Health and the CDC. So I want to really say thank you. The event with Laura Schroff by the Key Club and the C E A was a fantastic event. We could have sat there probably until 11 o'clock at night listening to her. She was very personable, outgoing, gave her, her personal life experiences, which the kids could reflect on because she was in a, an abusive situation. So there's quite a few people that have gone through that. So there was a lot of questions and answers, and it was really an excellent, excellent event. I would like to see her come back for the elementary school book that she wrote. The other thing, we belong with the School Boards Association, the N J E A, the Principals Association, and the Superintendents Association. It's called the Rutgers Labor Management Collaborative. So this year, Dr. Robert Tozzi and I get to sit on the panel at this event, and we're very excited. Dr. Sol Rubenstein from Rutgers runs it, but also listen to the guests of honor. We have the new Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona will be there. So, and our own interim Secretary, Commissioner of Ed will be there, and the heads of some of the unions. So this is going to be an outstanding program for us. Let's see. I think that's about it. Oh, no, one more thing. The Virtual Latino Institute that we were trying to do last year, but we had to stop it because of COVID. So now we'll be able to do it virtual, and it'll be conferences for the parents in Spanish. So it'll help the association, and it'll be different topics. So we just got the okay to start planning it this afternoon at 4:30. So that'll be a positive thing for our parents and, and the topics that we'll choose. I think that's about it. All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Lalama. You know, I, I was going to call you down the road, but it, my- but my call isn't going to mean anything now that you've had a call from the governor. So congratulations on that. And I just wanted to say thank you to you for the three great teachers last night that spoke at our meeting. Your association would be very proud of the job that they did, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Smith. I was listening, too. It was really a very good presentation by all.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Next, we have Donna Thompson.
Hi, yes, good evening, Dr. Robert Tozzi and the board staff. I'm just going to make it quick. We've had some time to, I guess, adjust with this COVID and everything. And I just had a question about the senior kids. What's going to happen with them as far as graduation? Is there any plan into doing something maybe outside because it's going to be in June? You know, I know a lot of schools have drive, I'm not sorry, driveways, have parking where you can have something there, or maybe they have like maybe a little park across the street from the school where they can maybe hold something there for the kids, or, you know, just something for them because a lot of them haven't been in the building, and they haven't been around their friends. And, you know, it would be something special for the kids. I know it would be for me and my family. I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels, but to have something like that for my daughter, who's last year for fifth grade, and she's going to be going to another school, and hopefully that won't be virtual as well. You know, this will be something good for the kids for their mental, you know, for their mental health, to see their friends and really connect with them before they go off in different directions to other schools and maybe even other parts of New Jersey. We don't know. So that was my question for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mountain has just told me that there is nobody left waiting to speak.
Seeing none. President Smith motion to close.
Motion by Bassford.
Second.
Second by Mr. Casper. Okay. All right, we will move on with the agenda. Unfinished business, I don't see any. Next, we have education administration. We have EA1 and EA2. What's your pleasure?
So moved.
So moved by Casper, second by Ms. Bassford. Is there discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Awad. Ms. Bassford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadrabo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Next, we have personnel. P1 resignations, P2 retirements, P3 leave of absence, P4 maternity leave of absence, P5 amendment of leave of absence, P6 amendment of maternity leaves of absence, P7 amendment of appointments, P8 appointment of mentors, P9 change in employment status, P10 additional appointments for the 2020-21 21st Century Community Learning Center Minds in Motion After-School Program. P11 additional appointments for the 2020-21 after-school programs. P12 additional appointments 2021 PBSIS team members. P13 conference requests. P14 coaching appointments. P15 reappointment of substitutes. P16 substitute appointments. And P17 personnel appointments.
So moved.
So moved by, who was it?
Abadra.
Mr. Vice President Abadrabo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daley. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran. Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadrabo.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Next, D, we have finance facilities. F1 is approval for transportation services agreement 2021 school year. F2 approval to authorize the immediate emergency purchase of district-wide air purifiers using the CARE Act funds. P3 is the claims list. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Casper. Second by Vice President Abadrabo. Discussion.
Mr. Smith, my agenda reads 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. I have 2, 1 and 2 are transportation services agreement for the 2020-21 year. I have 2 of those. And then my number 3 is the emergency purifiers, and 4 is the claims list, and 5 is finance. I don't know if anybody else has that, but that's what I'm seeing.
Under D?
Under D, yes.
Number 5, I believe, it's just saying 1 through 4. It's just over, it's an overview, I believe, if I'm mistaken, if I'm not mistaken.
Number 2 is the same as number 1 and this blank.
I could answer Ms. Bassford. Yeah, you must have opened it right before I changed something. There was a duplicate of those 2, and I got rid of one of them. That was the blank one.
So if she refreshes it, it should come up?
It should, yes. So it is just the 1 through 3 that Mr. Smith right now.
Ms. Bassford, you want me to wait? Okay. All right, so it's F1 through F3. Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Ms. Bassford.
Yes, I vote no on check number 201916. Thank you. All the rest is yes.
Yes.
Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daley.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadrabo.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
All right, next, we have board member comments. Today, we start with Mr. Canova.
Good evening, everyone. So to Mr. Mark Brunswick.
Brunziak.
Brunziak, sorry. I do sympathize with you, and I'm glad that we are going back to school on Monday. I know my daughters are excited. They bought new masks. They're ready to go, new outfits. And they're very excited to see their friends in school. There's one thing about being virtual, and there's quite another thing, being in person, being able to, even just that time before school, after school, in between switching classes, you know, conversating with them, it's different. And they were excited last time, and they're excited again. So I'm glad to see that. And I'm also glad to see that we have those air scrubbers going in the rooms. And if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Robert Tozzi, we are quarantining different this year, right? If someone gets ill with the virus in a classroom, it's only going to be the people they are in contact with as opposed to a whole class getting quarantined. Is that correct?
That's not necessarily correct, Mr. Canova. It's going to depend on the individual circumstance. Every single case that comes up will be spoken about with the Clifton Health Department. And on a case-by-case basis, the size of the room is going to matter. But yes, the best rule that changed was the rule that if you have 2 cases, you have to shut down. So that was really the best news.
So at least we won't have the yo-yo effect with the entire school being in and out. So that's good.
The only, just so I could mention, Mr. Canova, I'll probably mention this more when I speak, is the only, you know, concern is with really with Clifton High School, just because of the sheer numbers cases and the number of cases and how many teachers that could affect. But other than that, there shouldn't be any reason for us to have to close a school based on the current guidelines.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And so the only, so for me, I think that's great. We're offering people the ability to be in or out, you know, depending on what they choose. And I think really, no, that's the best way to go. Getting everyone back, that's a different story. We still do have 6 feet of distance. We still do have people that need shots. So until that happens, I don't know what that's going to look like. But at least it's an option now where if people want to be back, they can be. So I think that's great. And to Chloe, and then there was another call that they called in about outdoor activities. I think that's a great idea. I think doing something outside, distanced, at least, like I said, you know, it gets you out there, it gets you speaking to your friends. It gets you at least excited about being in a school year. It may be a little different, but at least you'll get through it. And it's a lot better than just sitting at home doing nothing. So I would definitely support that. And to Lori, I think that's an amazing honor to have a governor call and recognize you for all the hard work you do. And you do do a lot of hard work, and you most definitely deserve it. So congratulations on that. And I'll keep it short and sweet tonight, and that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canova. Next, Mr. Daley.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll be very brief tonight. Thank you for all the speakers. And I had some feedback. I don't usually get too much feedback from the public. But last night, I did get several pieces of feedback about the quality of the teachers and the students that are in our education system. I mean, we all know that, but it's really, really great that it's recognized by others who are not involved with this stuff on a day-to-day basis. My last comment is 55 million free money. The referendum, $55 million of free money. Referendum, 55 million free dollars. You can't find this anyplace else. And those who are the naysayers on this, and they may have some legitimate answers or questions, but you're not going to, the bottom line is not, you're not going to find $55 million to do these improvements anywhere except if you do the referendum. It's a critical component. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Ms. Danny?
Thank you. I really just want to thank the speakers. And, you know, I don't have much more than that because I'm just a little bit of pain here. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danny. Mr. Casper?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. So of course, I always like to start off with thanking all of our retirees. Thank you for your service to our district. One of these days, I will be able to say I can retire, so please enjoy yourself. I'd also like to congratulate one of our own. I was able to sit on the Committee for the Boys and Girls Club this year. So I'd like to congratulate one of our own. Her name is Rowan Awadala. I hope I said your name right. She is the Boys and Girls Club's Youth of the Year this year. So I just want to congratulate you if you're on. I'd also like to congratulate our Students of the Month. I was able to read. I picked up the Clifton Magazine today, and I started reading it. So congratulations to all of our March Students of the Month. I'd like to wish everybody good luck on Monday going back to school, to our students and our staff. Please remember just to be safe. Mrs. Lalama, I also got my first vaccine, and I've been in school for the past 3 months in and out myself. So I hope everybody just stays and remains safe. And I'd like to thank 3 people this week. I was able to get into school number 5 virtually this week to read. So thank you, Mrs. Bender, Mrs. Santa Susso, and Mrs. Wisnowski. Mr. Smith, I see we have matching ties on today. So here we go. Happy birthday, Dr. Seuss. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Mr. Awad.
My comments will be very brief. First and foremost, thank you, President Smith, for everything that you do and all the assistance you and Mr. Casper do when I reach out. Superintendent Robert Tozzi, thank you very much for you and your staff. I don't know if the public heard Mr. Daley correctly, but yes, there's $55 million of free money. And I don't know, I agree with Mr. Daley. I like some free money. $55 million for this referendum. It is basically a nice chunk of the bill that could basically modernize and bring our schools to up-to-date where our teachers and our students could thrive in a healthy, safe, secure environment where we're such in a competitive global market worldwide where other countries around the world, their schools are way more advanced than the situation we're in, and their students and their educational systems thrive so much more, yet we are basically always budget-cutting the teachers, our schools, and our facilities. And we expect magic and some magical results to come off from our students. Sometimes we got to look ourselves in the mirror and put the blame because we allowed it to get this far. So I really hope everybody did tune in yesterday, if not, to watch the YouTube channel. As Max said earlier, you know, there's a lot of great things and upgrades we can do to our schools. And I really hope we do get these votes for the current, future generations. And let's go Mustangs. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Awad. Ms. Bassford?
Yes, good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say today is March 4th. National Grammar Day is celebrated every year on March 4th because it is the only day of the year that is a complete sentence. And it's also a very dear friend of mine's birthday. So March 4th, Lindsey, March 4th. A lot of people don't know that, but there you go, a little grammar lesson. So I would like to thank the teachers from School 12, Ms. Pizano, Ms. Gagliolo, Ms. Caraballo, Ms. Fabiano, and Ms. Coleman. From School 5, Ms. Bosch, Ms. Nichols, and Ms. Cantinero. From School 11, Ms. Amire, and Ms. Rhodes. And from School 8, Ms. Porter, for having me virtually in your classroom. I am a presenter. I used to present in high schools virtually this last year. I've been a little bit, my job has been a little transitioned into something else. But I have to tell you, the teachers do a wonderful job from what I witnessed. If anybody challenges how remote learning is easy, I challenge them to sit in front of a computer all day long and read a book to students. The best question of the day came from School 11, and the student asked me what I actually do, and I had a little blurb. I told them all that we are policymakers, that we all, there's 9 of us, that we're all elected officials. We don't speak for the board. We speak for ourselves. But the best question of the day was, how much do you get paid? And when I told them nothing, they wanted to know why I did that. So I was a little stumped on that answer, but we all laughed. And I told them, because it's a way of giving back to the community. It's a way of me helping other people that can't help themselves. And it's a way of me being a voice for people, because I told them that the community, the people elect us, and it was really, it was a lot of fun. They were so gracious. They were so well behaved. Dr. Robert Tozzi, your staff did a wonderful job. And to the teachers out there that are struggling with this platform, thank you very much. God bless you all because it's not easy what you do every day. I was exhausted when I got done. I was off for the day. I just laid down, and I was wiped out. So I don't know how you do this day in and day out. I applaud each and every one of you, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I will send Max the Um, I sent, I, I will send Max the, um, the mental health from New Jersey School Boards. Dr. Feinschard will be very happy that you uh, are requesting it. And if I could ever give you him as a reference, I'm sorry about my dog's barking in the background. Uh, Chloe, um, is also doing a fundraiser for women's feminine products. You will be receiving a donation from my house. Uh, Lori La Lama, wow, isn't that awesome that Governor Murphy took the time to, to talk, call just you? Um, he, somebody must have told him you're doing a great job. So thank you, Lori, for all you do. And to the, uh, the two speakers that spoke about outside, um, activities for the students. I hope that this information goes to the Education Committee and probably Facilities. Um, so we can figure out a way to do it better. We have, we've had a year that nobody, that nobody else wants to relive. I know I don't want to relive this year. So maybe we can figure a way to do it better and celebrate every single student in a better way, in a better venue, and give the students exactly what they deserve. Um, with that being said, I think that's it. I don't think I miss anybody. Um, but, uh, to all, oh, uh, to my fellow colleagues, if anybody has anything, I will be attending New Jersey School Board's Legislative Committee on Saturday. There's also a sub-resolution meeting. If anybody wanted to put anything on the agenda, I'm on that committee as well. So, uh, please reach out to me and I'll make sure that your, uh, your questions or concerns are, are asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basford. Ms. Beltran?
I'll also keep it brief tonight. Um, I'd just like to thank again all the callers that called in. I'm really enjoying all the public participation in our meeting. Um, I'd also like to congratulate, um, all the Students of the Month, um, and also all the success that's been going on in our sports. We haven't been, uh, so focused on all the different sports teams that are still playing, but they are out there uh, doing it with masks and having to practice, uh, with limited crowds and, uh, not being able to do in front of their parents, et cetera. Um, so I applaud them for all the hard work they're putting in as well. Um, I'm really happy that we're going back to school on Monday. Um, I've been looking forward to this for a long time. Everyone knows that I've been um, a big advocate of getting the children back into the classroom. So I'm really happy that those that choose to go back in are going to be going back in. And hopefully we'll be able to keep them in if, um, everyone follows the social distancing protocols. Um, and again, for the referendum, we really need this money. Um, I sit on the Facilities and the Finance Committee, so I see how we have to choose to do things and not do others. And this will give us an opportunity to really do a lot of the things that we, we hope to do um, all at once to give our kids the best environment, um, and also our employees the best environment to work in. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beltran. Vice President Abadrabo?
Thank you, President Smith. Um, first of all, congratulations, Ms. Lori La Lama. Uh, well deserved and, uh, noticed for hard work. We have the, uh, C E A. Uh, Lucy, Danny, uh, Commissioner Danny, feel better. I know that you had your injury and you're just recuperating at the moment. So feel better. And I, I'm sure I'll speak myself at least. If you ever need anything, let me know. Um. You know, a reminder of why we do this. Um, from, you know, this past week of Dr. Seuss's birthday, as many have mentioned on this board, my colleagues died the fortunate opportunity to read to ten classes at five different schools this week, broken up between Monday and Wednesday, Tuesday and Wednesday, excuse me. And it was a privilege. It was a privilege because, you know, they said thank you, but I, I returned it back. So it's not about the thank you to me, because it's something I feel that, at least I feel should be done, right? The students and, and should interact, should see at least who the board members are. While they are, while they were in grades kindergarten, first, second, third, and fifth, uh, to whom I read to. Our discussions were, you know, what do you think board members do? The underlying message of the book. And tied them back into their today's lessons in class and their feelings about what school is today, the safety of everyone going back. And most importantly, uh, turning their negative thought about the next school grade level to a positive thought. And I think we had a great discussion. Um, and it was great. I mean, they are kids, but we gotta treat them, you know, if you treat them like kids, act like kids, and treat them like big boys and girls, they'll act like big boys and girls. And that's exactly what they did. And that's a definitely a great representation of what the school district is about. They were very well composed, even for kindergartners to fifth graders, and they were, they were awesome to speak to. So, um, Dr. Robert Tozzi, thank you for facilitating those through your, through your principals at the various locations. Um, and the teachers are just phenomenal as well. And that also speaks for the leadership of, uh, Ms. Lori La Lama as well, uh, because I'm sure she has a lot to do with the teachers and need a better presentation. Um, other than that, listen, school's coming up. Uh, we had a great meeting last night. I'm not gonna talk too much about that, nothing about that really, besides that everybody said we need the money, but school's coming up. I'm sure many are excited to go back. Many of the students I read to are very excited to go back. So, uh, I'm confident in Superintendent Robert Tozzi's decision to have them go back. And like I said, uh, Danny, you know, you're a great superintendent. I'm behind you all the way. You're the CEO of this district. Anything you need, I'm there. Uh, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Vice President Abadrabo. You know, I, uh, you know, some people last night were, were calling, uh, were talking about, um, this fifty-five million dollars that the state is giving us for our referendum as a, as a coupon. And I tried to, to figure out the analogy. And, um, after I thought about it, there, there are many ways that this is a coupon. And the biggest way that I could think of it as a coupon is coupons have expiration dates. And our coupon for this referendum has an expiration date. And that's this referendum. Because the state is not going to give us fifty-five million dollars or one million dollars or any million dollars for doing this referendum next year. Or any other Board of Education that puts in for it next year will not be getting uh, this thirty-five percent that we're getting back from the state. So this coupon does expire. And, um, I always hate when I had a goodbye at the supermarket and I saw that the coupon expired and how angry I got. And, um, I just asked the citizens of Clifton, uh, don't let that coupon expire. Uh, you know what the right thing to do is. And if you have any questions, um, and you don't want to ask us anymore, and you, you're, you're tired of hearing the board talk about it, you're tired of hearing administration talk about it. Um, please call the schools, talk to the principal. And if the principal allows, that maybe you could, uh, you know, talk to a student on the phone or something and let them tell you what it's really like if you don't want to hear it from us anymore. I think this board has done, um, and administration has done a tremendous job to put forth uh, the best opportunity to, um, fix some much-needed problems in our schools with this referendum. And is it a commitment from the public? It absolutely is. It is most certainly a commitment to uh, the, the kids of this district in public schools. And as I've said, in history, when we look back on the referendums in this town, and when we've, when boards have come before and have asked the public um, and have put a sensible project together and asked the public for their help, the public has always stood up and said, yes, for kids, yes, for schools. And I know that's what's gonna happen again, uh, on April twentieth. I know you'll do the right thing. Um, but like I said, you're more than free to continue to ask us questions. But if you don't want to ask us any more questions, there's many other people to talk to. And, uh, get the answers from other people. Uh, but please do your homework, please ask questions, and please be ready to go vote on April twentieth. That fifty-five million dollar coupon is, is truly something that can't be lost. And I know we keep talking about it. Um, I wish we had like, um, um, flashing across the screen, you know, like, uh, like Bob's Furniture or some people like that, that you, they flash sales across the screen. Well, I wish we were flashing that fifty-five million across the screen. Because people have to remember that. That should be upfront in your mind that if we don't do it now and we wait, we lose fifty-five million dollars. And that's a lot of money. Uh, what is it? A third of the project funded by the state that we lose. So keep that with you. Um, as Mr. Casper had stated, um, I had the opportunity to, uh, do some, uh, reading in our classrooms. And I thank all the schools for their invites. Um, with meetings and, uh, some other commitments. I couldn't get to, uh, every school. And, uh, I apologize, and I hope next year that I can get out in person to all the schools. But I thank all the schools that did ask me and, uh, invited me to their, to their schools. Um, but I was fortunate to read at the school number five virtually. Um, and I read it two classes. Um, so I'd like to thank Ms. Ms. Santa Susso and Ms. Seosi, uh, for inviting me to read for their second grade class at school number five. And to Ms. Wisnowski and her third and fourth grade special ed class. Um, I thank them for the opportunity to read to them. Uh, both of those were truly special to me, a true honor. And, um, I asked, um, Ms. Wisnowski to ask her special ed classes, third and fourth grade, if they could tune into, uh, Channel seventy-seven tonight and that I would mention them and that I would thank them for this beautiful tie that they gave me. Um, it will remind me of the time that I did spend with you and, uh, I was honored to, to be able to do that. Um, as I try to do in the community, I try to, uh, uh, help others in the community. And, um, a good friend of mine, Chris Lissner, asked me to, uh, assist her in a, uh, program of, uh, retired, uh, phone company employees that go out into the community and, uh, help the community in various different ways. And, um, she was, uh, um, had two, uh, locations that she was going to the, this, uh, program called The Pioneers. It may have a new name now, but, um, basically they're a volunteer group that go out into the community to give back to the community. And one of their projects was, um, Dr. Seuss's birthday, Read Across America. And, uh, she asked if I would assist her. Uh, and so as a good friend, I agreed. And, um, needless to say, the, um, that friendship is, uh, you know, um, what's the word, uh, on the rocks right now because, um, I had no idea um, of the commitment that I was getting into and the, uh, the costume that I had to wore and the tail that I had to have on the back of me. Um, but, um, I was very fortunate to be able to go and, um, uh, be with the kids at the Clifton Boys and Girls Club. And I commend the administration of the Clifton Boys and Girls Club on how, uh, safe they had it set up. Um, they had me in a, uh, separate room behind a glass, uh, a glass, uh, wall. Um, and the kids, uh, came up on a, on a, on a seat in front of the glass, and I was behind it, and they were able to take a picture with the cat in the hat. Um, so it was a real, uh, just to see their, their smiles, they're waving at me. Um, uh, it, it just was absolutely amazing, um, and how thrilled I was to do that. And, um, I'm glad that I had the opportunity to do that. And it was so good. The next day, the, the Pioneer Group asked me to go to another school in Fairlawn. Um, so, uh, I was able to go to the Sapling School. And this is a, a school that, um, just has, um, I say, very young students. Um, there is pre-K and pre-pre-K. And, uh, there were two, uh, kids there that were six months old. Um, and seeing them and waving to them through a window and having them smile at the cat in the hat is, um, it, it, it just really touched me. And I was happy to be able to help, uh, my friend and to, uh, to be able to do that. So, and I thank Mr. Casper for helping me out with, um, the, uh, the accessories that I needed. Uh, so I thank you for that. And, uh, I always look forward to, uh, to the first week of March, uh, because of, uh, Dr. Seuss's birthday and, um, um, being able to, uh, connect with our schools. And I remember last year, uh, going into school five. And I believe it was, uh, you know, uh, eight or nine days later is when everything shut down. So I was so fortunate that I was able to go in and read to them personally. So I'm looking forward, uh, next year, uh, at this time to be able to do that, uh, in person. So I thank everyone for that. And I just wanted to, um, you know, I know all of us, the nine of us, um, we run for this position, and we know that the commitment that's involved in this. But I just have to thank, uh, my fellow commissioners. Um, these past, uh, probably the last two weeks, uh, you saw from the committee reports how busy, uh, we were with committees. And, uh, the Finance Committee met numerous times. Uh, we have negotiations going on. Um, education, uh, facilities. Uh, I think, uh, uh, Mr. Awad had his first experience of running, uh, his first meeting as a chairman of, uh, of residency security. Um, just so, all of you working, we have, um, a municipal alliance meeting set up for, uh, March the eleventh. Um, so this board is working so hard uh, for the citizens of, of Clifton. Um, and we joke about it all the time about, you know, being paid so much money and we're not paid so much money. And we know that, and we know the commitment that it takes. But I just want to commend all of you as, as the president, um, setting up those committees, uh, that I knew each of you would work hard. But really, uh, seeing that list today of committee reports really showed, um, how busy we've been. Um, and not to mention, last night, we had a special referendum meeting. Um, we'll continue to work hard for the referendum. And Monday night, uh, this board will have another meeting. Uh, we're asking our representative from New Jersey School Boards to come in and do an ethics training for the board members. So we'll be virtually on another meeting on Monday night. So you guys have really put a, a tremendous amount of effort and work in, and I just wanted to say thank you for the continued work you do for, for the, the kids of this district and the citizens of this town. So thank you all very much. Uh, Dr. Robert Tozzi, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Commissioners. Very excited that, uh, kids come back to school on Monday. I know most of our staff, uh, you know, just can't wait to see children again, to hear them running around the halls. Um, I just want to be a realist. Now, I expect us to open and stay open for the rest of the year. And when I say I want to be a realist, I want to be a realist that we will have coronavirus cases, okay? We may have a case on the first day back on Monday. And we'll follow our protocols, we'll exclude the positive cases, we'll quarantine the contacts. But I am one hundred percent certain that we are putting our staff and children in a safe environment. Not only are we wearing masks, students are behind a desk shield, students are six feet apart, windows are open, air scrubbers are, are flowing. So, um, it's gonna be great to have kids back, and I'll be visiting the schools to say hello. Um, I just want to remind people with spring break coming up in, uh, three weeks that there are travel restrictions that come from the state of New Jersey. And so if you travel outside of the immediate area, uh, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, New York, um, depending on the circumstances, um, depending on the circumstances, you very well may have to quarantine when you come back. So that, that is part of the health survey that is an absolute requirement for all parents, uh, and staff to begin filling out daily. Um, and we need everyone to be honest. It's not a, I got you. It's, it's just to protect everyone. So if you're unsure, um, call, call your child's school. You can speak to the nurse. They can give you guidance, but please answer that survey honestly. Please do it every day, uh, so that we can open and stay open and ensure that everybody's safe. I want to congratulate our academic decathlon, uh, team under the leadership of Mr. Matthew Stewart at Clifton High School. Uh, the academic decathlon team has made it back to the nationals for the second year in a row. Uh, they finished sixth place overall in New Jersey and second place in, uh, all of New Jersey out of the large high schools, which is an incredible accomplishment. I'd also like to recognize the gold medal winners in social science, Julian Serone. Literature, Brian Wiglinski, and in the essay, Julian Serone. So, uh, congratulations to those students and Mr. Stewart for all your hard work and good luck in the nationals. Uh, we know that you'll make us proud. I also want to take a moment to recognize, um, one of our outstanding teachers at Clifton High School, Jessica Farrell. Um, I just learned this week that Jessica started a volunteer, uh, group called Vaccine Angels. Started out as a, uh, a Facebook group. Started out that, that Jessica was helping some of her family members get appointments for vaccines and, um, realized that a lot of people were having a hard time. Um, either they didn't have the technology, they didn't have the capability of, of making these appointments. So, so Jessica started this, this, uh, I think it started as a Facebook group, uh, Vaccine Angels. And since she started this group, she has personally helped seven hundred and fifty people get vaccine appointments, uh, in New Jersey, which is just incredible. Um, she is now helping some of our staff members make appointments. I think we, we, she's, uh, helped almost a hundred of our staff members get appointments, uh, too. I know she has some help, uh, so, uh, I also want to recognize Lori Jaeger from Clifton High School, Kim Nickel and Danielle Quinlan from CCMS. Continue doing that great work. Um, it's, it's, it's about paying it forward. So congratulations to, to you folks and great job. Uh, finally, on the, uh, on the referendum. I just want to update, uh, the board about where we are in the process. As you all know, I thought we had a very successful community forum, uh, last night, um, which will replay again a few times on channel seventy-seven and channel forty for files. Um, we have our citizen committee, which will meet again on March sixteenth. Our website is live and frequently updated. Uh, our One Clifton magnets have arrived and they'll be going home to students, uh, next week and board members will be getting theirs. Um, we just are at the tail end of finishing up, uh, a short video under the direction of Mr. Mike McConney. Uh, and his, uh, excellent skills. Uh, we're also gonna have some students do mini videos. There was a postcard that was mailed to all homes in Clifton, uh, about two weeks ago. And there will be another postcard, uh, in early April. So we're trying to get the word out to, uh, to get the vote out on April twentieth to get that fifty-five million dollars in state aid to make much needed improvements in our schools. Uh, the HSA leadership, uh, has been very helpful. We had a meeting with all the presidents. Um, they will be outreaching to all of their, uh, individual school groups. And, uh, some of them are going to be hosting their own kind of mini referendum, uh, forums for people. So that's really fantastic. Uh, so if you haven't checked out our website yet, please do. Uh, remember the referendum date is April twentieth. And we have the opportunity to improve our schools for decades to come. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Robitose. Okay, we'll move on, uh, to, uh, F, uh, new business. Does anyone have any new business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Canova.
Um, since we're, our referendum is coming up in April. And, uh, I know they have, they do have meetings virtually for, for city council at least. I don't know what other meetings are in the area. Just like, um, when people run for Board of Ed, generally they go around to different places and they let them know that these things are going on. Is there a way where you as our board president can represent us and speak to the community at these various venues about the referendum to get the word out?
Uh, yes, Mr. Canova, I will gladly, uh, uh, do that as well. And I was gonna speak to the board, um, about, uh, the board, uh, uh, helping out with that as well. Um, so, uh, we could talk about that, uh, further, but absolutely, I will, uh, be more than happy to speak anywhere uh, to help this referendum for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other new business? Okay, seeing none. Um, executive session. Um, we have, um, a, um, a student matter. Um, uh, Delise, anything else other than the student matter? No, so hopefully executive session will not take that long. Will, uh, action be taken? Or action could be taken?
No action will be taken.
Okay, so no action will be taken. We'll adjourn from, uh, executive session then.
Just one comment before we go in, if I may. Um, we did promise Max that he would get an answer to his question about, um, public comment on remotely. If the meetings are in person and remote, there is going to be, you will have to provide, uh, opportunity for public comment remotely. So I just didn't want him to believe without having that question answered.
Okay, is, is that legally?
Yes. Legally speaking, if, if the board is having a meeting, if it's only in person without any remote, then public comment is remote. I mean, I'm sorry, public comment is in person. But if there's going to be any remote aspect to the board meeting, which I think that we've already had this conversation, that there's going to be, it'll be a combination in person as well as with remote access for certain board members. Uh, then the public can be in person as well as remote for public comment.
Okay. Okay, uh, motion to, uh, go into executive session.
So moved.
So, Mr. Casper, taken by Ms. Basford. Uh, Mr. See, take a roll call on that or no?
Um, yes.
Yes, roll call, please.
Mr. Awad.
Yes.
Basford.
Yes.
Ms. Beltran. Mr. Canova.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Danny.
Yes.
Mr. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Abadrabo.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Mountain, if you could take us in?